Let's call the meeting floor and number 10. And we will start with the pledge list. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first order of business is the consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda?
I second.
Moved in second in any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? In the second half? All right, first up, we have student representatives. Abby, read it and go on.
Welcome. Um, to start us off, we just have a collection of ballots. Just a homecoming event going on, this following month. To start off, we have the Kedon Assembly on Friday, September 20th. And then following that, we have the parade, which will have court cars and like the football field and volleyball and all that stuff. And then after that, we have the football, I mean, the future Fox Center. And that's going to be for kids in the kindergarten and the parade. And the court will be there and there will be like parents and a lot of coming stuff. And then after that, we have the home parent showcase, which will be at 7:00 p.m. against North Salem. And then during the halftime, we'll have court for the children. They'll be on stage including Royals for the senior class. And you'll go around tracking the court cars and all of that. And then after that, we have the bonfire for the high schoolers. It usually ends with like 10:30 to 11:00. And the following day, you will have the Halloween theater, which starts at 8:00 p.m. and ends at 11:00. And please do that, it's in black and white.
Um, and then, so for some club updates. So this summer, FBLA went to nationals and they took 15 students to San Antonio, Texas. And Isaac Milner placed third place out of the nation in electronic career portfolio. And then Jayden Manser and Matthew Snyder placed in the top 15 for their social media campaign. And that was pretty much it for FBLA this summer. And then also for summer events, Skills USA, they took third in college firefighting, fifth in high school firefighting, and seventh in career pathway. And that's all their national competition, which is where 55 others compete. If the state champions from each state compete, I mean, that's pretty crazy that they're fifth and seventh. And then the rest of the clubs are all kind of starting up right now this week. After the first week of school, they all started going again. And then as for sports wise, last week volleyball had a game. They sadly didn't do too hot against South Albany. But this week, they have a home game on Tuesday and Thursday, both league games. And then on Saturday, they go to South Eugene. Boys soccer, we won 5-0 against Capuce at home for our home opener. That was a lot of fun. And then we played Maris, at Maris on Thursday. Girls didn't play last week, but they play at Milwaukee this Thursday. And then football, most of you know, they won 50-0 against Central, season opener at Central. And then this Friday, we play at home. And the theme is Camel Night and it's Military Appreciation Night. It's going to be a really cool thing where we have a Black Hawk helicopter landing before the game and then it's going to take off. It's going to be a lot of fun. And then cross country, last Saturday, they had the really fun Baltimore Race, which is at Tillamook. And during the race, in the middle, they run through a big old mud pit and it's a lot of fun. Some people shoot fall off and it's an experience. And then they have their Silver Falls Oktoberfest meet this Wednesday. And that's a really, that's a tough run if you're running varsity. And then dance team is starting practices this week. Cheer, they performed at last week's assembly and at last week's away game. They look really good. They have a lot of girls out there and it's a lot of fun to watch. Marching band, we've been working really hard. We had a really great week of band camp before school started. And our show is going to be nice, really cool this year. It's really competitive. It's going to look a lot, a lot of fun. And we're going to play our first movement at the game this Friday. See anything else? And that sums it up for the sports and parks. Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we will jump right into our first public comment. I will read the introduction. And then if you're hoping to present, please be ready to come up and sign in. We are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all modeled the way for our students and we ask that you share your thoughts in respect to the way. The board's role during public comments is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. And a second public comment will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of the meeting. You'd like to present to the board?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I have a statement I'd like to read on behalf of Kyle Palmer, who is at this meeting tonight. I also have my own comments I'd like to make, but I'm also happy to let him speak. And I have two different three minutes and I've got my timer going. Okay, so this is from Kyle Palmer, the mayor of City of Silverton. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Silver Falls School District staff, and members of the public. Many of you know that our community began a very open and much needed discussion on racism and hate recently with a tremendous amount of productive social media engagement as well as an interactive forum co-sponsored by the Silverton Library and City of Silverton. While it goes without saying, bullying for any reason at all deserves equal standing in the conversation. It's a relatively simple issue in my mind with only two relevant realities. Number one, this is not a new problem. Racism, hate, and bullying exist in our community in general and in our schools and have for some time. Number two, it is past time to draw a line in the sand and use all available tools to ensure that all members of our community, including students in your schools, have the opportunity to experience a social, vocational, and educational environment equal to all others. Those of us who attended the forum at the library heard the experiences of two adult sisters who have been repeatedly treated in ways that brought many listeners to tears. One stated that she'd lived in New York City and Washington DC during her lifetime, but felt more fear in Silverton. They heard the experience of a young Silverton native who had lived in another country for several years only to return with a child whose race alone has caused him to lose old friends and faced the realities of racism head-on in Silverton. Following some initial contact with the mother of students who formerly attended school in our district, I reached out to every person of color I could speak to. And 100% of them relate experiences of racism in our community at some point in their lives. Amongst them, Silverton is considered an unwelcoming place to anyone of color or cultural differences. That's not something I can live with. That is not to say that all of Silverton feels this way. Rather, I believe that only a very small slice of our community feels true hate towards others. However, I also believe that society has given a pass to those of a certain generation and looked the other way when they make a joke or make a comment that reveals racial insensitivity using the justification that they just grew up in that era. That's no excuse and it models the wrong mindset to others. This is the moment in time when we all must recognize that the color of one's skin, or the country of one's heritage, or the culture of one's family history are not an indicator of one's value to society, to our community, to our families, to our workplaces, or to our friendships. I know from experience that a small group of people are only able to see this issue through the lens of political partisanship, but they are mistaken. I will submit the rest of this. Kyle had more to say. And I'll ask him actually to forward it directly to your in-class. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Scoville. I'm not really a public speaker, but I work at ZACCA. I'm a volunteer firefighter. I graduated Silverton High 1995. I'm the gentleman in the letter that spent years overseas and now has a black five-year-old. I left Seattle where I'd lived for 20 years because I thought this would be the perfect place to raise him. And that has been one of the single most biggest mistakes I have ever made. And I will always fault myself for that. If you think that it's not happening here in town like I didn't, it is. And I am just here to speak up for him because he doesn't have that capacity yet. He just started kindergarten, it's his second day. He sees the world in Silverton like I did 25 years ago. But there's going to come a time where he's going to see it like I do now. And that's tough. And so I'm here because I want to share that experience because I'm a step forward, right? I thought this would be the most ideal place to bring him and raise him. And we're going to adopt and have more. I don't know if it will be here though. I'm not saying there's some nirvana out there, but this idea that Silverton is that nirvana is troubling because it's stopping us from being proactive, if that makes sense. And so my only purpose tonight is to speak for him. And so I feel like I've done that. I'm welcome to have questions afterwards or have conversations outside of this room so others can talk. But I do my part in the community. Like I said, I'm a firefighter, I work for the food bank. And I know we can do better. So, thank you for your talk.
Hello everyone. My name is Sivon Baxik. And I have, I lived in Silverton and I have the unique experience of also working in almost every single elementary school in this district. So I have a broad view of what is experienced even at the youngest levels. I have, I don't, can't really speak about the high school, but I can tell you by the high school, it's way too late. And my experiences have been not just with the kids, but with staff. I have been called to my face, the kitchen help, at school by a car. I've been, I was given the opportunity to, I can move to a different school district because I work for the WDSD, I'm a street manager. So, but this is my community. So I don't want to get anyone fired. I want to change the discussion because I am living just like a family. And I would like to think that my child will be safe in Silverton. I wanted to, I'm really happy that this discussion has started. And I really want to emphasize two things. It includes staff training because, like I said, I was called the kitchen help by the staff. I've seen instances where discipline was handed out by two children, to two children very vividly at the same time. One was said, "No, that's not what you do." Very sternly, and stepped onto class while the other doing the same thing at the exact same time was told, you know, "You have to put away the schoolers, you have to..." They got the two in the dress gown and they had to find the teachers to apologize. Not to say that that discipline was wrong, but it's just inequity. And when I think about how that would translate at a later date when you're talking about high school or junior high, it's a problem. So the staff needs to be trained also in education because you can't leave your apprentices at home and give them dog. Next, I just, this summer, I had to work with a five-year-old who is now in kindergarten, who was sure that she hated black people. She had never met one until she met me. So if we're waiting until high school, it's going to be too late because this would be solidified. This, I've been asked by my tail, I've had, I've had other students, spoken with other parents, whose kids were called Jeju. And those stories are old stories from an older generation. That term Jeju is from the 1930s. The whole tail thing that black people are monkeys, that's been there for a long time. So I just want, I've also heard first graders coming together talking about how to exclude the black child on the playground. We need to come in early, we need to teach that early. And I'm willing to speak to anyone who has questions. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you for coming.
Any other public comment? Did you still want to?
I don't really want to relate to that. My name is Sarah White, and I work for Silverton District. And I just wanted to speak to why it matters so much right now. In the time that my children have been in Silver Falls schools, they have heard outrageous statements directed at them and at students of color around them, and students of color and LGBTQ kids who are not in the room. Statements about calling for the extermination of people who are Jewish, or black, or Jewish. I think I've talked to dozens and dozens of really bright students at the high school, at my children's school, at the charter school, about their experiences and they're outrageous. I think there are a lot of people in the community who love this town so much, I like this town. But it's hard to look at the dark parts of ourselves and still love it. And I think we're uncomfortable with that. But I feel like it's a great opportunity for our community to really mine our character and figure out who we are. And as long as one person says this is my experience, we people of privilege have an obligation to believe them, to listen to them, and to make sure we do not tolerate that kind of behavior in our community. I think that can look like a lot of different things. I think it can be restorative. I think we have opportunities to educate children. I, in my work with the homeless community, work with white supremacists. I work with immigrants and people of color, and I love them all. I believe we have challenges and we have opportunities. And I just hope that the leadership in our district will take, follow our mayor's lead and stand up and say, as long as it's happening to one child, that's enough. And we need to be bold in the way that we address racism and bias in our community. I think we need to not use neutral language when we respond to these incidents. I think we need to respond in a way that makes all students feel safe, no matter what. And that also, I think the board receives opportunities to educate kids a little bit more and be in a little bit of education. And I think we can do that in a way that builds everybody up. And I want to say so, I hope that you will take some time to consider opportunities for anti-racism and anti-bias education at all for individuals in the district.
All right, so now I'm here as Dawn Tacker, a mom. I'm a parent of sophomore at Silverton High School and a fourth grade boy who is home celebrating his 10th birthday right now. I am here because this is important. It's important to talk to you guys about this. I want to start out by reading aloud our district's mission statement. Who can recite it with me? Working together to cultivate character and academic growth in each student every day. Think that students have overheard and or witnessed at our schools. Get ready to get deported to Mexico. A swastika carved into a lab table during class. The N-word. Weekly Nazi slooks in the hallways. Education is defined as, one, the process of receiving or giving systematic instruction, especially in school or university. Number two, an enlightening experience. I was raised by a racist family. I joked with Paul the other day. I'm kind of glad that my grandfather passed when I was only eight. I don't think I would have liked him very much. What changed for me was serving as a pageant congress when I was 16, living on my own in a dorm with 66 other children from around the country. Fully 50% were of color, changed my world. Went on to receive university education in Washington DC. After growing up in New York, changed my world. All these different touchpoints changed lives. In a town where kids may not have those kinds of experiences to fall back on, it is even more critical for all of us to meet our mission. I'm requesting this board support. And because you know I don't just bring problems, I like to bring solutions or ideas to throw them out there. First and foremost, talk to your administrators. Find out how they're addressing issues. One fantastic example, Wade Lockett, is Silverton High School has convened an equity meeting. Wade told us all about the kind of things that they're doing to do training and to listen, to hold focus groups, to understand the experiences happening there. And they're just on a great path, I'm so impressed with them. Number two, make addressing equity, diversity, and inclusion a board priority that's reflected in your strategic plan. Discuss this regularly. Number three, assign resources to give your superintendent and assistant superintendent the tools and expertise that they request to address this problem head-on. Number four, prioritize and fund an anonymous recording system to get a handle on data. The 2020 election is 14 months away. Reasons and the bias are real concerns that affect students' safety. We need long-term effective education to address these concerns. But I'm specifically asking tonight that we put together a task committee or force or other group to address how we can defuse political tension to avoid a repeat of the aftermath of the 2016 election. I believe that Silverton is better than this. Please join your concerned citizens in finding ways to provide state learning environments and create healthy dialogue.
Okay, any other public comment tonight? Okay, with that, we're going to move into our discussion items. We have a few of them tonight. The first one is adoption of the 2019 to 2024 strategic plan. This is something that was put together through, like, last year through a task force that was put together by our superintendent at the time. This was completed, I want to say June. I think it was completed in June and we had put off voting on it until after the new board members were able to be seated. And we did have several readings of it, several discussions on it, and some back and forth with the committee. And there were several drafts that were put forward. This is currently the final and ready-to-be adopted draft. At least that's how I view it. Any specific comments though from anybody? Anybody that has some concerns or things that are needing to be discussed?
Well, I'm glad that we have it on the agenda for tonight because we haven't been able to really discuss it since the committee was able to present it to us a few months ago. So this is a great opportunity to have a talk about it. And I, I see that they, just as a refresher, we did have, I believe, one discussion with the committee. And we had given them some language to implement into some of the indicators. And I see that that's been implemented. So I just wanted to refresh our memories and the community that those have been implemented. And also, the, you know, the core values, mission statement, I think we all, I think agreed on those. We didn't have anything else to add to that or to the way and language. But I'm interested to hear what our new board members, after, now that they've had a chance to read through it, if they have anything that they want to contribute.
So I have a number of things that, I guess I saw as places where we could really bolster and enrich the plan. And that may not happen tonight, it may happen as we go. But at least, and I'm just drawing from my own experience doing strategic planning, some of the things that I saw, in general, I felt like our strategic goals could have been more specific and more tied to benchmarks that were easier to monitor and that had a little bit, I mean, I keep using the word teeth. I see a lot of data collection and data monitoring. But what I was looking for was, what are the specific steps we'll take to intervene? How will we do that? What is sort of the action plan? Now, I do know, obviously, that this is supposed to be the what and that the administrators and the staff contribute, you know, create the how because that's their job. So I do understand that this document itself may not necessarily need to provide that level of detail. But I guess I would like to hear more, having not been part of this process and not been on board when it was looked at previously, whether that is understood to be an objective and, whether it's desired. You know, is that, is that something that other people are looking for as well? Or is it just me who's looking for some more detail around, I mean, I said here, how progress will be measured, how data will be collected and analyzed, and how intervention will occur in a timely way to keep us on track? That's actually more process oriented than it is asking for specifically, what are you going to do about this goal and what are your programs? Are you going to have a new curriculum? I don't need to know that level of this thing. But I guess to understand, at least to know that we're on the same page as far to what we're, what we're expecting. And then some of the other things that I saw, I see as sort of larger issues too are, I'd like to see the budget preparation process be better aligned with this document and this process so that we really are resourcing what we're trying to do. And that was one of the concerns I saw too was, nothing really articulated specifically about how staff are going to be supported to achieve the goals. So for instance, an example would be the bullying and the goal, oh, school communities are inclusive and free of bullying and intimidation. There was a lot of monitoring. But are teachers and staff, do they feel supported enough? Do they feel they have the resources that they need? Are they equipped? Do, you know, they, we're sort of sending them out to say, stop the bullying, but we haven't really indicated that we're providing any resources to help them to do that. That may not be necessary, but I guess what I'm looking for is just some more of that kind of bulk, you know, to understand that we are, so that we can be accountable as a board to say, we've not only put this vision out there for you, but we provided you with the tools to get it done so that when we turn around and evaluate our progress, then we can actually do that with integrity rather than having, going, well, we didn't, we said we had that goal, but we didn't really pay attention to it, we didn't have the resources for it. Well, now how do we evaluate the individual or the team who was supposed to carry that? I'll stop there.
I would just say that I echo the desire to want to align our financial resources with the plan. And we have been making some strides in that area. And also just reporting in general, that's been, there's been some movement there. I think we definitely can keep, you know, narrowing the focus on that. I don't necessarily need more detail in terms of implementation because I want to make sure that we're staying in our lane. How, you know, there are some things that we'll never hear about because they're just, it's not, it's building level data that doesn't necessarily translate to the board. But I hear what you're saying. I think there's a lot of good process kinds of thoughts in what you're saying. I think that, you know, I work in a district that started a strategic plan process 22 years ago. And at first, it was kind of clunky and then it would be just got better and better and better. So I think it takes a little bit of time to get to be awesome at it.
I think one of the things I want to make sure is that when we have goals and strategies for implementation, that we really can measure them. And some of them were pretty easy to quantify and others were fuzzier. And that's just going to be the nature of goals in general. But I would encourage us if we think about them moving forward, that we really think ahead as to how are we going to measure whether or not we've done this well. Because- Because that puts everybody in how to treat.
And can maybe I suggest, because this is a huge thing that I keep talking about over and over. When we went to the event last year, to the OSBA conference, there was a guy who's written a book about how boards can be effective. What can boards do? And the number one thing is to monitor and to ask for that data. And I said this before, that in the past, our superintendent has presented us with the data on a regular basis and done a good job at that. But that really is our job to request that data. And so I would be willing to suggest that, you know, that can be, there could be a point person here somewhere to develop that kind of ask. And maybe that would be something that you would be interested in doing because I think that that is in our lane. I think that we are in our lane when we're asking for that information as long as we all agree on what that information is because we can't over-ask, I don't think, of course.
I think that also works, it kind of delves over into a little bit of a partnership with the superintendent as well. I mean, he's going to be giving us information when we don't ask for it anyway. So, but I do hear you and I read that book, by the way.
Oh, you did?
I did, yeah. I did.
Good for you.
Thank you. So anyway, the one other thing I wanted to say about this was that this isn't actually a living document. And this document can be modified with, you know, over the next years if needed. So whatever data we are receiving or that we're asking to receive, you know, is it falling in line with these indicators that we have here in goals? And if they're not, you can tweak them. You can tweak them here and there. You can, you know, align it with the budget, you know, when budget time is coming in the spring. So I'm not too, you know, this isn't set in stone. And that's what I like because what's written here is definitely not going to be the same in five years. There's lots of things change every year, you know. So, you know, you kind of have to figure out what's going on and, you know, what's happening in your district. And when we get that data, then we'll be able to say, okay, does this data match here? And then, you know, our superintendent will be able to say, you know, I suggest this or that, and my administrators say this and that. So I just wanted to remind our board of that because I keep forgetting it is a living document, that we can actually modify if needed moving forward. So with that being said...
But I do want to mention...
Yeah, go ahead. I just needed to ask, yeah, go ahead, no.
Well, I was going to say, I do want to make sure that we're not like the legislator who puts together a new statute and then hands it over to the executive branch that says implement this. And so they go, right. What even were you, you even know what we do, you know?
Right.
And so what I want to make sure then, that we are being very mindful of when we give this to our superintendent, that it is a roadmap that actually you can follow and gets you somewhere and allows you to then flesh out additional detail and create a work plan to achieve them. And not just sort of a, you know, that would be my intention. It would be a workable roadmap and not just sort of a visionary document.
Would there be time to maybe do some editing, small editing, within a short amount of time and then to review it and possibly approve from there? Because for me, the strategic goals feel, they ring a little hollow. They feel light. And I'm wondering if the net is so loosely woven, how can it have or hold any form? And so, I don't know. I sort of feel like a little bit more should be added there. Quite frankly, just to pinpoint it a little more. That's just been my feeling as I've been reading through this. If that's appropriate.
One thing I'll mention is, both of your comments in particular, I think echo some of the ones that I had early on in this process. I think part of it is, I've been through, I think everybody else has either been through or was familiar with this process. It was new to me and it's new to both of you. And so you're both having, I think both of your comments sound similar in that not any teeth or not enough teeth or we need more specifics. Too fluffy, a little too wide open. The response that I got from the folks that were involved at the time helping lead us through this process were that these are going to, in the first year, year one is essentially fleshing out the specific measurement criteria, the specific things that are going to be associated with these boards. The specifics even beyond what's on these, you know, first-year implementation accountability plan. I asked, well, you know, how do you know if you're on track, right, at Lizards? I think the questions I'm hearing you guys. And the response that I got at the time was, well, that's what we spend year one basically doing is figuring out how that all works. That was when I was assured it's an evergreen document and that if there are concerns, we can address them in the future. That gave me, I guess, a little bit of relief from the standpoint that, okay, if that's the case, I can support this as it is knowing that we're going to go through this process. Of course, that was prior to a lot of other changes. We have a new superintendent and assistant superintendent. So I suspect there's that involved. The other thing I wanted to do was give Paul a chance, if you'd like, to weigh in on his thoughts on this and how it would pertain, you know, what would you like to see happen with this stuff?
Sure, thank you. I really appreciate all the comments I've heard here tonight. I would just say that I am so full of gratitude for all of the excellence.
Jonathan, can you tell him to speak into the mic, please?
Thanks, Erv.
Thanks, Erv. I'm full of gratitude for all of the excellence that I am observing and seeing with my own eyes as I go about getting to know Silver Falls School District. And I'm really honored because I've been dealt a winning hand, if you will. There's a lot of excellence here. And I would say that this is one of those things that I've been dealt, we've been dealt, is that this is, it's important for us to honor the work that has come and been done by a lot of really thoughtful people who put in a lot of hours. And it is a good piece of work. And now that the cards have been dealt, now let's go to work right in our hand. So what I'm going to recommend to you and ask you to do is to go ahead and approve the document as it is, knowing that as this year unfolds, we will be developing what are our baseline data? What are our metrics? What are our measurable targets and outcomes that we're going to be going after? And also reporting back to the board. In fact, I've got a plan that I've been working on to, like, three reports delivered to the board where we are saying, hey, here's our accountability report to you. Here's how we're doing. And tend for those reports to include, hey, we're hitting the mark on this one. We're moving on. Hey, we're not hitting the mark on this one, therefore we need to apply more resource to it. So to your question about budgeting, we start to get into the overlap with the budget process, especially as we get into the spring. And how we're doing our work will be transparent, will be accountable. We'll also then guide and inform how we go into our budget writing process in the spring. So that's a lot of a glimpse of the year ahead in about two minutes. But I think the comments that I've heard tonight are things that I also agree with and that we're ready to go to work on. But I'm going to ask you to go ahead and approve the document so that I can go to work on that stuff because I'm ready to. And I've got staff around me who are really ready to go to work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think that, I would add that, you know, I was around for the first, for the first one. And, you know, if this one goes like that one, I think all your questions will be answered because I saw some really, you know, we get annual reports and all these goals. And I saw some really great discussions and data and just discussions on how they struggle with this and struggle with that, modify this, modify that. And, yeah, I think, I think that you have good questions, but I think they'll be answered. You know, I mean, there's so many of the staff who are here who they've ended up with the first one and they're just adding on to that for this next one. So, yeah, I definitely, I definitely vote for approval of this.
I just have one more question for Paul or the board. So there was a lot of data that was generated from those community forums, sitting in those, I, you know, I've heard a lot of different things. I don't necessarily see that detail reflected here. I wouldn't necessarily expect it to be. But I'm wondering if you have access to all of the really important things that came up in those forums that community members were really concerned about, were passionate about? Because they aren't, again, they're not necessarily in here and I don't know if they would be available. Paul, just as sort of background context for knowing, you know, as recent as nine months ago, what was really sort of burning in people's minds about the kinds of things they wanted to see happen that were in much more everyday, you know, reality, the life they're living kind of level as opposed to things that are more visionary?
I haven't had my eyes on that data yet, but I'll look to do so.
I just thought it was great. Their forums were fantastic, people were well-informed. It was just, it was a goldmine of information, so.
Yeah, I know it's available, so.
Yeah, it's on board focus, a couple times.
So I guess I'm looking to the folks that had specific comments. Are there further discussion you were hoping to have? Or is this satisfied you for now? I'm trying to gauge whatever.
I'm just going to ask Paul just one more question. Do you have, do you have any, you know, when you bring us data or when you get data, do you have an idea of how that process would work yet? Or have you, you're just sketching that out now?
Really just sketching it out now.
Okay, good.
I would imagine though, it'll probably be more data than you could consume in a one-hour meeting or probably another event or a series of conversations where we dive in, look at the data together and see, we're all seeing the same things. So, yeah, just kind of some loose ideas. Probably involves papering the walls of this room.
Okay, great, thank you.
Erv, any thoughts or comments?
No, I just wanted to thank Paul for his comments and I, that's exactly how I was feeling too, so thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Laurie Chen, anything further tonight?
No, I think that captures it and I, you know, I look forward to the next step.
Yeah, I, you know, the hardest thing is, is when you're not a part of breathing into the document. You really don't know how it started and how it began formed. And also the point in time where these issues or those issues or whatever they may be were important and placed into this. And I do believe there was a lot of hours placed in this. I am new to it. Just a few of those areas feel light and that concerns me. And I know there has to be an element of trust that the strategic goals avoided the hurdle. And again, I'm very new at this, but that, I mean, after the public comment that we just listened to, my heart said to me right then, and I went, I wanted to see what's going to happen, how we can start training and changing that together. So I'm relaxed and very friendly.
I understand what you're saying. It's a big document to take in. And it's, you know, we've had the opportunity to talk with the committee members as they come and present. You know, it really does help when they speak and because they add a little bit more dialogue to what they've done and more language. I mean, I have questions, I have all kinds of questions about the document, but, you know, and the strategic goals and the language. But what I want, I think what I want to do is, this is brand new right now. I want to let Paul do his thing. And then when he comes back, I don't know, November, October, you know, he has an update. Then, you know, what he brings back here, I'm going to take into consideration with all my notes that are in this document. And then say, okay, Paul, I have these questions and you brought this to us. You know, let's, now let's have a discussion. And so, do you feel good about that?
So this really is intended just to be the outline and then you're given the opportunity to start developing the shapes and the form and writing things, rolling the details.
Okay. And then when he comes back, if you have questions about this, maybe his data or his information that he brings to us can answer some of your questions that you might have in here or not. You can say, oh, well, I have this idea, you know, or what does this mean? And then we start having more dialogue with each other when the data starts coming in and all those basic information. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You're welcome.
So basically, this is the framework. And then you get to bring in the rebar and all that stuff and start building. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair discussion. The next item up for discussion is the permanent superintendent search process, which is amazing that we're talking about it given just what you're the superintendent. So having said that, I was in contact with Sarah from OSBA and she indicated that from a timing standpoint, we need to discuss it now if we're interested in having them do the permanent search. And we need to approve it probably by our October meeting if we are choosing to hire them. There are other firms that do this sort of business. There are several in the area. There are a few that have emailed us. I forwarded you all those, that information if you have it. I think I want to start with a couple of thoughts of my own regarding how the process went. I would say that by and large, they did a pretty good job. There were a few things that I gave feedback on regarding the condensed process and the timelines that we run under that resulted in this confusion. But I think the reality is that the permanent search would be a different beast altogether with considerably more time and less urgency and pressure to try to just, you know, one thing after another. So I think the process is a little more polished from what I've seen in terms of the, they sent us a draft, they sent us a draft timeline. Having said all of that, I was pretty confident with them and there is a financial benefit to continuing with them considering if they do the permanent search, the interim search is essentially free. So my default position is I would consider OSBA based on what happened already. But I want to open it up to you guys and see, you know, where did you fall on that? And are there other things we should be considering in the next, say, month to, before we decide?
Well, currently, I was given the email by you of one other individual or one other agency and OSBA. Are there others that I have not seen?
There are others.
Oh, there are?
There are others, yeah.
We only received one.
We received one proactively in addition to OSBA, but there are other outfits that we're missing.
My, not concern, but I wonder if any of those other options have a department full of attorneys like to call on? I mean, that, to me, the OSBA feels really safe in the sense that they have lots of experts at their disposal. And that just to me seems the safe way to go.
Well, I haven't researched the other companies. So I can't respond to the, you know, if these other companies have a load of lawyers that we can call at any time. I don't know the price. I don't know, you know, this is, this is the first time we've been able to talk about it and we just got information from these two, you know, OSBA and this other company. So I'm not 100% sure. I guess in my thought process is I like to do the research for both. We went through the process of one of them, with one of them. I'd like to read about the others, if there are others, and see how they compare on paper. Clearly, we haven't gone through a process with them. But when I'm searching for, you know, someone to hire or to do this kind of work, this very extremely important work and long-range work, I want to make sure that I have as much information as I can to make an informed decision. So I'm not saying no to OSBA. I just want to make sure that I know the others instead of just saying, well, let's just default to OSBA. That's how my brain works. I like to get all the information and then make a decision, so.
Yeah, no, it's a reason.
What that means, I don't know. We have one other business, but you said there's many businesses out there who do this. So I don't...
I've at least heard of one more beyond the one that. So I know there are at least others. And I'm guessing if we tried, we would find others beyond them.
Probably.
And that other business did not provide a quote, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
My impression is that they're one-person operations.
Well, okay, I'll just add into account, but I, yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to know for... to know for a fact. I, I don't want to assume that it's a one person.
Well, I mean, it is, I mean, it is.
Yeah, I mean, you know, everybody's different in the businesses.
That's right.
So, you search for the best business that you think works for you, and you go from there. I mean, that's, that's what I do. So, I'd like to use our money, you know, very wisely to make sure that, you know, we're not spending anything extra that we're not getting from the service. That's just, you know, that's not saying that OSBA didn't do that. I'm just saying that I like to research. I'm not gonna make a decision tonight. I need to do some more research.
Yeah, well, we weren't going to make a decision.
Oh, we were?
We were not.
Oh, no. Oh, okay, yeah, okay, right. There's not an actual, right, okay.
So, that's my thought.
Yeah, because we don't, I don't think we received a quote from OSBA about what their.
Well, we were given that information when they presented regarding the process for interim.
That's what I was just looking for, but I can't.
So, I need to go back to that.
We, we were given all that information.
Okay.
I, I remember they all, they all, I think I asked, I don't recall what that number was. Well, we can, but.
They probably have it written down. They probably sent it to us in the email.
Yeah. Jonathan, Jennifer, I'm, I'm with you guys, and I mean, I was satisfied with them. The problems that were there because of the interim process and the shortage that was compressed, and those wouldn't happen in the long process. It'd just be more time. So, I'm, I'm kinda like, you said, well, my default position is I'm satisfied at ten and I'll do fine, but, you know what? If, if somebody has a brochure and what they charge, take a look at it, but they're, OSBA's the first place for that, I'm sure, right? But if they can, if they got something they want, they want to offer, I'll read it.
I would like to know if there are other options besides the one that you shared. OSBA, yes, we, we went through that process with them, but I'd like to know if there's some others that the board would be, would like to consider or at least read through, and so we can have NMVs on those. I'd like to know what other options there are, frankly, and then we can decide as a whole what works best. But I would like to have some options. I know we're on a tight timeline, but nevertheless, I'd like to just research a few more.
Well, that, that's why we needed to bring it up tonight.
Sure.
Because we needed to get the follow-up.
But I mean, my only input to that would be if, if I'm in the business of helping school districts hire permanent superintendents, they should already be flooding our inboxes with that information, and we're getting one. You know what I mean? It's not our job to contact them, it's their job to contact us. If they don't know, we're looking for a permanent superintendent by now. They're, I don't, they're.
That should be their business.
That's their business, so, you know, one has contacted us, and a few wants to send us a brochure and a price sheet, yeah, a proposal, take it with you.
Does somebody want to volunteer to collect information, get more specifics, make a few phone calls?
I'll do it.
Something you want to do first?
Happy to do it. Yep. I love doing the research, so I can get as much information as you want. Thank you very much.
No, I think that'd be great.
That's great. Honestly, you guys, I think it's really healthy that we have to do this. I, I mean, you know, if, this is a huge search. This is a big deal, and I think it would be, um, really, can't even think of the word, but I don't think it would be a fair process if we didn't at least expand a little bit to research. I mean, just defaulting to go with somebody that we already used to quickly get us somebody, I, I don't, I don't know. I just, I feel like we have a little bit of time that we didn't before, and I think we owe it to the taxpayers, we owe it to our community and to our district to show them that we are gonna do the research and find out more information and then make a decision.
Okay, Sheriff.
That's my thought. That's good.
I can get you four or five firms by tomorrow.
Okay.
Contact us.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Why don't you send them, well, to all of us probably, and then she'll have them too.
And I can have them, and then, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. Fantastic.
Okay, as far as timelines, so, I'm aiming for a decision in October, which means we can either add it as a discussion item at our work session this month, or it could be a discussion item in October with an action item to follow.
I think we should probably discuss the work session.
I think we should too.
Which I tend to agree, but that gives a, I'm just saying that only gives two weeks.
Well, we're used to that.
Right.
We're in that mode too, so.
Haven't gone out of number yet, so.
No, that's fine. I can do that, and I'll, I'll send information ASAP.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, no problem.
Okay. The next one, board and budget calendar, which I think we have a draft in front of us. So, here we are. We are on the first item. This basically lays out the meetings, including proposed dates for the budget meetings, which are gonna be, they must be.
Mr. Chairman, there's, um, there's a conflict with the first work session out of the World Schools, the dates, but I'm just gonna switch locations, and I'll make that final.
Okay. And is the 23rd, we have a special meeting for May?
Yeah, and then, this is just our standard.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, like, our, um, our summer work sessions in here. This is just our meat and potatoes.
Just normal.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
Okay.
I'm glad you said that.
So, all I did, because for schools, I just started over from two years ago. I just, just restarted the topic.
Great. Oh, perfect. Okay, great. That's good.
I really, I really like those settings. I like going to the schools for these, even on a case like this, it's fantastic.
Yeah. It's fun going out, because if you can't get out to see the schools, it's a perfect opportunity too, so, yeah.
I just have a question about the budget committees, where you got to ask them, only because I know that Charles Baldwin has been concerned, quite vocal about the fact that there are not enough meetings and that there isn't a good process, and so I'm just wondering if, what you all think and whether we need to consider adding, or if you had a conversation around that already on that.
So, if I may, can we, can we postpone that discuss, because I think the discussion in and of itself is broader than dates, right?
Sure.
So, if we presume that these dates, especially around the budget, means, could be inflexible when you make changes to the process.
Right.
I'd like to postpone the discussion about budget to a future meeting where I think we'll spend some amount of time, kind of digging through that. There, there were a lot of things that I've heard, some things I thought myself for last year that I wouldn't like see better asked.
Yeah, no, that's great. It's gonna be a more substantive conversation.
Yeah, and there's information that I would like to share as well regarding the process and new information that I learned, so, sounds good.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we had a pretty packed agenda, you know, but probably we have it sometime before the end of the year, we'll have that conversation when this process should kick off early in next year's budget.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so just the basic, so just basic budget meetings, the normal.
I think we'll just leave this as boilerplate again. Most of it changed. This is not, since no one's even voting on it, this is just for discussion.
Perfect. Great, that sounds good. Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as we have one in the future.
Right.
Near future, so to speak.
Right. Uh, the two, so, sorry, one, so, I'm looking here, so the regular board meeting is moved out because of that.
Holidays are, holidays are pushing some of them close together, and there's been no breaking between, and then we have here, make sure that's.
And is November the 25th the week that schools are all crowded? Is that acceptable?
That's November 25th, so that's where we're coming up at the, I think I might have to move that, well, okay, that is an exception. I might have to move that to December because that is our conference time, and some of the schools are running a football every day.
That's right.
But in December, maybe Silvercrest isn't the best place to go anyway, so, December.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, we're just gonna.
We could, they could.
So, it'll be a little bit of movement, but.
That's fine. The school will stay the same.
Yes, yeah, okay. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you for putting.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for getting it to us. Appreciate it.
Okay, I have one other item. So, we've been notified by OSBA that there are elections coming up for positions on their boards and, as well as other positions. There's a regional position that we put nominate somebody to front door, and there are other positions as well available. Technically, the board can nominate somebody, and I think there's other ways to be nominated as well, but I just thought I'd throw that out there if anybody's interested, if people are thinking about it, we could talk about it then.
Well, I think for, for me, my opinion, we have a lot going on this year, so, I'm, I'll vote for someone else. Even, I think even we take votes, you know, I think the ballot comes to us, even if it's someone from another district.
We do, we have.
Yeah, so we just vote for, you know, whomever it is, so.
I was very tempted by the Legislative Policy Committee.
Yes.
It was just totally in my real house, but I just had to say no, because, you know, we do, we have too much going on, and so, maybe next round. It was very, very tempting.
It is.
Anybody else interested or not interested? I, I do not plan to run.
Not interested.
Not interested.
Okay, we can keep going. Is there anything else for discussion tonight that we didn't otherwise cover over? Okay. Good. With that, I will move us right into administrative and staff reports. Steve, you're up first.
First, the enrollment. Five days into school, it's still, you know, pretty early. We'll have some similar information for you beginning of October, but basically, as of right now, we started the year, we set up a portfolio of schools again, 3,968, which is 10 students, the last one we started at this time last year.
Hey, Ernie.
Yeah.
We're getting a bunch of noise from you right now.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thanks.
But, so 10 students for the last one, we started last year, that includes the two charter schools, but 41 students above where we ended last year. Typically, in a moment well, typically, a lot of course, we hear. So, that's good. Now, the charter school enrollment's usually between 260, 2 to 267, the two charter schools, so we back that out. The 11 Silver Falls School District schools are at just over 3,700, 3,706. We started last year at 3,712 and ended last year at 3,663. So, basically, essentially flat. Again, it's, it's early Friday, last Friday was Mark, Mark Twain's first day for the Kingergardeners. There's still some, you know, some reconciling going on out in the building, and it's hard to say that, you know, music doesn't, doesn't differentiate too much, but we, we look at it every morning, and we essentially, every school district has to report ODE by October, if October 1st is the first ADM reporting. So, we'll do what we did last year at the October board meeting, and we back up a document for you to share, and give you an update on where everything kind of settled in at by school by the.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're up, you're welcome. And then for financials, the first two months are always slow, and so we're just, basically, this is a summary of July and August together, and year-to-date for the general fund. Next month, we do a quarterly report for the schools, which really don't have any expenses until September gets going, as well as the other funds. But tonight, what we have is just the first overall look at the general fund for the first two months, months of the year. It's actually, in the, in the first 60 days, we, we receive 25% of our state school fund payments, so, double payment in July and then one in August, so that's why that number's already pretty high. And, so July is always where we're, you know, kind of getting the revenue built up on a quicker pace, and the property taxes come in in November, December, and then of course, June is where we don't get a state school fund payment, and then we have three payrolls. So, so July's kind of the one end and June the other. So, anyway, everything's on track so far. I did plug in a very early estimate into beginning of balance line item. I feel like we're gonna be somewhere in the 4.7 to 4.9 range, which is slightly less than budgeted, but it's still early. We're still closing the books. That'll happen through the end of September. Our auditors come in in September, and we worked with them to have our audit report done as you, it's, it's condensed in December, so we'll do a report on that. And just attached to that, just, it's always a good reminder where kind of the last estimate was with ODE. This was as of June 26th, that's the last one we had for this year, as far as our state school fund, which of course is the bulk of our general fund revenue, so just to kind of give you an update on that, because I don't think, I think the last one we saw, I mean, the budget process was a May estimate, so it didn't change too much, but this, this is where it finalized, and again, it's based on the 49% distribution in this year and 51% next year.
Steve, I was trying to relate the, on the second page, that, that says total formula revenue minus local revenue, the 8.45 million in local revenue, and I'm trying to go back to your first page. Is that primarily, where, where that's gonna be, help me find that.
No, I understand what you're saying. So, the, the line items with the asterisk, asterisks.
Okay.
Excuse me, the revenue line items with the, with the asterisks next to them, those all feed into the, I choose the term total formula revenue, which on the state school fund, she is 39 million, 829, 958, bottom, bottom left. Then they'll deduct the, what this one just estimated, say, the local revenue, which is.
Okay.
The rest is divided, so, and then they pay us that, the 31.
Right.
Divided by 12. So, the local revenue is essentially all the items except for the 3101. 3101 is essentially the state school fund payment, which is that net result, 31 million. The rest of those starred items are local revenue as defined by ODE for the state school fund grant.
Okay, so if I added.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. 11, 12, 90, and 2101.
Yeah, so property taxes, county school funds, common school funds, state timber, and federal forests.
Oh, those as well, okay.
Doesn't seem like the local revenue, but for.
I know.
The definition of state school fund.
Right.
It is, and those are actually all monies we receive directly from the sources, Marion County, Lockman's County for taxes, for example, as well as the timber, you know, from the various, from either county, and then the state school fund payments come directly from ODE on the 15th.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
You're up.
Great, Mark Twain, great, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. The border corps kicked off the year. So, I kind of broke the border corps down into four categories. The first one is obviously the seismic upgrade or construction, and then kind of followed our, you know, the strategic plans. You guys have just wrapped the scene, so you guys have kind of asked the question, how do you know if you're on track? So, hopefully, I have some little answers for you, at least of what they look like in our building, in our studios, so. And then, we'll talk a little bit about one big factor in our building, which is the social-emotional learning. And then lastly, and again, one of the strategic goals, the attendance piece. So, first of all, huge thank you, I think, to Lauren and his department for the construction and the seismic upgrades, the cleaning that they had to do to get our building ready, which kind of, at certain points during the construction, kind of fell behind schedule a little bit. And, and then individually, two staff members that are on his crew, Michelle Livingston and Stevie Collins, outstanding job. They, they do such a great job for us. Our staff appreciates them. I know they feel appreciated in our building, but can't, can't say enough about those two. So, we are, we were ready for kids on day one. So we were ready for kids on day one, teachers got their rooms ready, everybody did amazing jobs, and, you know, the upgrades are welcome, and they are going to be great for kids. So just a quick little rundown, which, as I was thinking about this list and kind of going over it in my head, out of context, they will feel like, oh, well, that's kind of neat, but in our building, they're like huge things. They're like new roller coaster at Disney, that huge thing. So new sidewalk on Robinson Street is welcomed by the parents as well as the students. New carpet windows, blinds in some areas where the construction touched the building. Upgraded wiring for internet, security cameras, new phone and intercom system. All of those things have been upgraded, and staff has very appreciated those. Electrical upgrades, improvements for technology and emergency notification systems, specifically the fire, the fire system. New refillable drinking fountain station, which is the, is the big hit. That's the, that's the big roller coaster for us, is that kids can get cold water and they can refill their water bottles. So that is outstanding in our building. Playground concrete repairs, we had some safety concerns that were addressed right away. We appreciate both Dan and Paul for diving into that and Lauren for mailing down a contract to get that taken care of, and it was actually taken care of on Saturday and finished up. So new exterior siding near the front entrance, we've got an upgraded lighting system throughout the building, and then we removed a large Conex container that was there for storage, but it really impedes invisibility for staff to be able to see the kiddos, so that is gone. And then two projects that were delayed, and we are surviving without them for the moment, but kitchen is getting some upgrades, they're getting a new, brand-new walk-in cooler, new dishwasher, some structural upgrades in there. New shelving and upgrade design in the library, also the library's getting upgraded cataloging system. So we're really taking advantage of this time to step into what the next ten or fifteen years in a library or media center looks like. You know, so trying to think of ways where we can institute some technology, maybe just have a little bit more efficient system in there, and just thinking about how students are going to use a library-media center in a K through two building. And then finally, we've got some landscaping that's going to come after they're done outside, and then a new sidewalk is coming in on the west classroom wing of the building. So, you know, for the construction, like I said, some huge upgrades, some really upgraded safety features. It's obviously with the seismic piece, I guarantee you that place is not going down. So it's unbelievable the amount of reinforcement they put into that building, so very much welcome. Second piece is the academic performance, and again, you know, to be perfectly honest, when I come and present to the board on the strategic plan, I go grab the strategic plan and just, I give the statistics and the data that shows kind of our progress and how we know if we're on track in our building. And that's not only academic data, which you'll see in section three, talks a little about social-emotional learning. But to kick off, last year, we finished the year off, we've been, we've had a district assessment, which is called Renaissance or Star, and are we about twelve years, Mrs. Anderson, on that?
About twelve or twelve years. I put ten on my report, but we have the highest numbers in literally all grade levels that we have had in like a twelve-year history. So one of my thoughts when I was putting my report together is we have worked really hard. This is my fourth year at Mark Twain in its current setting, before it was Eugene Field, and we have worked really hard to align financial resources, align our personnel resources in such a way to help student success. And so how we know if things are working is when we end up with numbers like this. So I think it's pretty impressive, I think it speaks a lot to our staff, and when we see students falling behind, how we intervene with them, when we see students who are exceptional or in that tag category, how we differentiate within the classroom. So first off, number is, kinder, and this is English and Language Arts, who are reading scores eighty-seven percent at or above grade level. The district average was eighty-two point one percent. First grade was seventy-seven percent, which is, that last year is ten percentage points higher than the previous year, so a huge jump in first grade in our reading scores. Second grade, eighty-five percent at or above grade level, which is six percentage points higher than last year, and the district average was fifty-nine percent. When we look at the strategic planning, strategic planning, and we talk about on-track to graduation, in a K through two building, on-track to graduation means students are at grade level, at or above grade level. And so that's what these scores reflect. In math, again, the numbers were off the charts, unbelievable numbers from the math. Again, highest in the twelve-year history of the assessment. So first grade, ninety-six percent of students at or above grade level, nine percentage points higher than the previous year. And in second grade, ninety percent at or above grade level, seven percentage points higher than the previous year, and the district average is sixty-nine percent for second graders. Moving on to S E Ls, social-emotional learning standards are huge in our building. You know, there's five components to social-emotional learning, and, you know, we work really hard to help students regulate their emotions, be in a place emotionally to be able to have the information so then, be in a place where they can learn. And earlier, a couple of points, we were talking about, I think we're really fortunate in our building, I can only speak to our building, but K eight district-wide, we adopted a social-emotional learning curriculum, so we use a caring school community. And one specific category that kept resonating with me as I was listening to the comment was, now our teachers have a tool, every teacher has a, has a packet of resources, and we follow a curriculum app that talks, in this case, social awareness, which is establish and maintain healthy interactions and relationships across diverse communities. Embrace diversity and take the perspectives of people different from oneself, and demonstrate empathy for people similar to and different from oneself. So I think it's great that we at least can impact kiddos in a social-emotional learning, you know, capacity, and this is one of the tools that we have, the teachers getting training, ongoing training, and to, you know, to help them navigate their environments and to be successful at school. So just a few, you have the report, but in the S E L priorities and programs at Mark Twain, the behavior piece or the social-emotional learning piece is very important to us, so we have the curriculum, caring school communities. We have an intervention, anytime we teach something in school, if students are not getting it or they're falling below that standard, it's important for us to intervene. And so when we intervene, one of our interventions is a wellness room program, which is basically a program where we can explicitly teach the students about self-regulation or any other lagging skills that they may have. That program has paid off huge strides in just the single year that we had last year. You know, we saw results in our referrals and data tracking, we saw results with the kiddos that use that environment. We have guidance lessons, so our counselor, in addition to our S E L curriculum, goes into classrooms and delivers guidance lessons, and then has small group instructions for certain students. We have Playworks and the structured recess program, which Playworks is the company that helps us with a structured recess program, helping students, you know, at recess time. That program paid off really, really big for us. We saw forty percent reduction in referrals during recess time alone. So we know some of those things are working, and again, as I referenced before, but how we know those things are working, which was the question you guys had asked earlier this evening, we know because all of those numbers are changing and the academic piece is included as well. Couple other things, we have a de-escalation room, so sometimes, sometimes little kiddos have bad days. And sometimes little kiddos' bad days can look very different from up there to anywhere else in the classroom rolling around, you know, just different, different ways that there's, you know, lack of self-regulation in that moment comes out. So we have a room dedicated to allowing students to go in and decompress, you know, where it's private, and they can take the time that they need to and then transition back into the classroom. So a number of success stories, I would probably say, and you guys work kiddos who've had a really, really tough time. That room has, has, has been a giant help for us in supporting kids during the school day. Trillium Services, again, we're doing that again this year, it's a family service that we host within our building. P V I S, you know, at, at Mark Twain, we've always had, always been a P V I S school. So what that looks like in our building is a lot of very clear expectations, be teaching during those teachable moments, be very, very clear with the expectations in different areas, and then just really try and have structure and order in the building and teach the kids to, to respect each other, be safe, and be responsible in their, in their school setting. We have a mentor program, and so we have staff members who volunteer to be a child mentor, and we just have a very simple check-in and check-out process, so that students are getting, in addition to their classroom teacher, an adult that knows more than just, you know, things that are happening in the school, knows about the family, knows about special interests, things like that for little kiddo. That, that program has been very successful. And then this year, new this year, our counselor, and I have a few staff members here. I have a kindergarten teacher that is here, Mrs. Anderson. I have a first and second grade blended teacher that's here, Mrs. Weekend, and I have my school counselor that's here, Mrs. Jones. And one of the programs that we're implementing this year is called the Student Ambassador Program, and it's basically for those students who come in and are new to our building, may, may feel a little shy or apprehensive. It's just a program where we have some leaders that are willing to show them around the building or maybe kind of, kind of tag team with them for the day and involve them in a game and kind of model inclusion and things like that during recess time or at lunchtime. So I'm real excited to see how that program unfolds, but the premise behind it is outstanding and fits very well within teaching students how to respect diverse backgrounds and how difficult that it may be getting into a new school. Alternative recess and work completion location, which is, which is something new for us during, one of the things we're starting to see is that, you know, our building, and I'll talk a little bit about attendance at the end, but in our building, we're, we're full. I mean, it is, it is full, it is wall-to-wall, little kids under the age of eight. And so one of the things that happens during recess time is we send all the kids out to recess and we tell them to go play. Well, a hundred and twenty kids out on the playground is great for like eighty percent of the population, but there's twenty percent of the population that that's just too much. Chuck E. Cheese with a hundred and twenty friends is not good. So, so we have an alternative location that we're going to staff this year, and, and actually in the process of working out some details in there, but just a smaller area for students. It's another intervention that we can help support kids so that they don't continue to go out to recess or Thunderdome or however they view it out there and continue to, you know, get themselves in trouble because of some behaviors that are not appropriate out there. So that, that will be, that will be successful this year for sure. And then lastly, another thing that we're doing this year is our P E teachers going out during a couple of recesses to help initially kind of facilitate games and teach kids, picking teams and including kiddos, talking a little bit about problem-solving skills and things like that, and eventually releasing responsibility to the kids and being more of a, more of an observer out there. But just, you know, teaching kids how to play games and to play with others and to include folks and have, you know, have fun or etc. Third section, or the last section was about attendance. So our attendance rate last year, we finished the year at ninety-three point seven four percent. It's a hair low, however, we were sitting at just a touch under ninety-five percent, which is the district goal, in, in like early April. So tail end of the school year, you know, one thing that we understand in our building is that the kiddos are not driving themselves to school. So, so we typically try to have as many conversations as we can with parents, impress upon them the importance of having their child at school. And so we have, we communicate phone calls and letters to those families whose students are eighty-nine percent or lower. We do that about three or four times during the school year, so that's our intervention with attendance. And we've, we've had a pretty good attendance rate at our building in the last four years. So I would probably say ninety-three point seven four is the lowest, but we've anywhere from that to like ninety, a little over ninety-five percent. But what to watch for is kind of our, you know, a little concerning. I think if you ask the staff member, they might answer the question a tiny bit differently than I'm going to answer it right now. But I can tell you that right now, when I left, and we actually had two new students that registered today, we are sitting at about three hundred and forty-nine kids. Ideally, and we don't always get the luxury of living in the ideal, but ideally, our building, we would like to have three hundred and forty-five kids, that's six classrooms with twenty kiddos in them. That's nine classrooms, or six, excuse me, six kindergarten classrooms with twenty kids. And then there's nine remaining classrooms of first or second grade that we have twenty-five as kind of our target. And that's, that's a lot of youngsters because we're K through two. And so three forty-five is our ideal number, currently, we're at three forty-nine, so we're, we're a crack over that. Still in a very good place right now this year. However, this is the fourth year in a row that we have not accepted any transfers to Mark Twain. So we deny all transfers just based on the mere fact that we're full. And, and this year, I've been working closely with Mrs. Baloff, and this year, we're estimating that, that number's about thirty to thirty-five of students that we have approved transfers out of Mark Twain's attendance boundary. So if you add the students we have, roughly three fifty, plus the other thirty or thirty-five that we let out of our attendance boundary, we have a building that holds three fifty as a hard cap, but we have three hundred and eighty-five students in the Mark Twain attendance boundary. So our staff and myself are concerned a little bit about what does next year look like? What does the year after that look like? We don't really have a site that is conducive to modulars or any type of expansion. And so just, you know, making sure that that's on your radar so that we, you know, we have a plan moving forward so that we can serve our students and help them continue to experience the success that we experienced this past year, so. That's all I have. Any questions? Any clarifications off of the report?
Nice report. Okay, yeah. I like the data. You can always, you can always answer for it, didn't you?
Yep, yep.
It's neat seeing a fifth or sixth seismic remodel in the district, and every, every principal has reported the same thing, it's like, this is a big shot in the arm for safety.
Absolutely.
But the district, I mean, but the building as a whole, fresh wall, paint, lighting, it really. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the, thanks for the heads up on the, on the crowd.
You bet, you bet.
Yeah, so quick question for you, you have a counselor in your school. How often is she at your school? Are you allowed?
She's full-time in my.
Oh, she is?
So she actually, she actually runs what we call a kid den, which is a wellness room. That's our, that's our S E L intervention. She works out of that with an assistant. So when she leaves to go do, so we have a schedule where kiddos come and get their intervention. And when she leaves to go teach a guidance lesson, her assistant can maintain the schedule. It's not ideal because we would love her to have her in front of kids, however, it serves, it serves kids. We probably run about forty-five, maybe a few more kids through that, through that classroom, serve that many students, which fits with our, you know, the percentage. You know, you kind of, you know, talking about kids kind of at the tip of the iceberg that are showing us a need in S E L, so that's how we operate that, as well as her teaching guidance lessons and then meeting in small groups sometimes with students that are showing that need as well.
Great, that's good to hear, because we, you know, wanted to get counselors in the schools.
Absolutely.
That was one of our goals, so I always want to ask about the counselors that we were able to do for a couple of years ago. So I always like a progress report on that.
And we've been very fortunate, we have always operated with a full-time counselor.
Great, okay. And then also, what are some of your other challenges that you think you have in your school? I mean, this is all wonderful information, but I want to hear about if you have any other concerns or challenges that you'd like to tell us about.
So the one thing that's a challenge, I feel like, in our building is that when you get kiddos who are, a third of our population is coming to school for the first time, and when you have students that show a need, it could be emotional needs, you could have trauma, you could have, you know, other factors, maybe some domestic factors that are happening, as well as, you know, learning disabilities or any type of need, we don't know what they are. So there's a number of students who come to us and our term is unidentified. And the staff's job, and that's where I feel like our model of an early childhood intervention school is really, really important, but our job is to really find out how we can best support the kids, and sometimes that's a long process. If, I can tell you that in some cases, it's, it's, it's a full two years, almost into, well into that third year before we really identify what that challenge is. And so, you know, every, every day's a new day, and, and, you know, we try to, we try to learn as much as we can one day so we can use it the following day, but we have, we have a number of students that we're still trying to figure out how to support them. And that looks very, very different from, from one kiddo to the next. And so sometimes our staff gets stretched really thin, because while we're trying to do that, we are also trying to serve those kids that start to fall. do that, we are also trying to serve those kids that start to fall academically below grade level. So a kiddo that, you know, is below grade level in reading, it's important for us to dive in and give that child an explicit intervention based on where their language skill is. So sometimes the staff gets spread really, really thin. And then I would say the last factor is that these kiddos are all really, really young. And the only way to support this vulnerable population of kids, just based on age, is to have adults facilitating their environment or helping guide them. So we don't have the luxury of having a lot of independent time with our kids. We can't turn our kids loose and say, hey, you guys have free time. Free time is like, that's a bad word for us.
Not free time.
We don't have free time. Structure, always structure. But that's what I would say. I would say our building, the staffing is very, very important and making sure that they're always in a classroom, in an intervention, or supporting or supervising those kids that we're trying to understand who they are and how they learn that so that we can help them. Because again, the measuring stick based on the, you know, the strategic visioning plan is kids are on track to graduation. Well, that looks very different from child to child.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thanks a lot. Good evening. So I apologize, I don't have the handout in front of me right now. I thought that was.
I didn't have my glove on. I'm like, I don't think I have a full bag. So I'm going to run it down.
I apologize. The only copy on the front of me right here.
Okay.
I'm going to go over a few things here. I'm not going to be as in depth of each single program that goes on at the high school. If we try to do that, it'll be four hours of reporting. And it'll be long winded anyway, so I'm going to try and kind of condense all of this tonight. And if you've got some questions, please feel free to ask. But we are going to go over enrollments, our total enrollment, or enrollment by class at this point right now. Our attendance from the end of last year, what we look like, your graduation rates. What we have on track to graduate, which we think is a very important statistic for us at this point right now, and actually something that we are very proud of. Talk about some new courses, new pathways. Our PD for the year, which was touched on a little bit earlier with Mr. Packer. And then probably our biggest issue that we've had as far as the school year, two years, is concerns, our traffic and parking structure. And we'll talk about what that looks like moving forward and some of the meetings that I've got coming up. It's been a very good start of the school year. I feel it's, it feels like attitudes and friendships and relationships are very strong in the school right now. That is something that was, you know, something that needed to be addressed, we felt like, for many of us that were aware of the situation towards the end of last year. We have a lot of people that did a lot of hard work over the summer, had a lot of hard conversations. I do want to thank our assistant superintendent, our superintendent, our five building reps, Assistant Principal Johnny Farrow, our five building reps, Frank Patrick, Debbie Satrum, Elena Mandish, Allison Stolpes, and Josh Cray. We put a lot of work in just helping us build some bridges and break down some walls and build some relationships at the school that feel like they've laid the groundwork for a very strong start to the year. And I need to recognize that because it's made a huge difference, not just for me personally, but I think for our entire staff. So that's, it feels like we're off to a really strong year. Our total enrollment at this point last year was hovering around 1340. Right now, we're hovering right around 1300. By week go, the number was 1313 this morning, it was 1300. So kind of students coming and going. We have one seventh grader taking a math class at the high school. We have one eighth grader taking a math class at the high school. And then our ninth and 12th grades are our smallest, and our 10th and 11th grades are by far the largest. And so part of that is, part of our ninth grade numbers being down is a little strategic in that our building was really just kind of bursting at the seams over the last couple of years. And so we kind of started cutting down our transfers ourselves, and we're able to kind of condense that number a little bit. And we're starting to see the impact of that with significantly fewer numbers this year. The on track to graduate, according to ODE, on track to graduate is really completing 25% of your credits year by year. So for a ninth grader, it would be six credits. For a 10th grader, it would be 12 credits, so on and so forth. By that count, our 10th grade on track to graduate is 331 out of 337. Our 11th grade with 12 or more credits completed are 339 out of 347. And our 12th grade is 302 out of 306. Now, that can be a little bit misleading because though as far as the credits are concerned, they are not, that is not, we don't even, you know, as far as seniors are concerned, four that are credit efficient. However, one of them, they have failed an English class that they need to graduate. So, and still have 300, you know, or I'm sorry, still have another 18 credits at this point. So it can be a little misleading, but it's a pretty good base number. And generally speaking, our counselors have a very close eye on the students that are either credit efficient or need those classes and do a very, very good job with that. Because our 11th grade class that we've been keeping a very close eye on, that we still feel is within striking distance of 100% graduation, that's a huge goal for us. Obviously, now that we've got our 12th grade class of 302 out of 306 students that are on track, we feel like we've got a pretty good shot at them as well. We've got a number of new courses this year, 14 new classes that we're offering, including opening up our foreign languages. We are now offering French as well. French I this year, we'll be offering French II next year. We're also offering a guitar class, a casual music class. And I apologize to Mr. Patrick that I haven't had an opportunity to get and see that one quite yet, but I think that our numbers are pretty full, and we're doing a pretty good job as far as that class is concerned. So, and then we've got a number of CTE courses that we offer, or I'm sorry, that we've kind of opened up to, including fire science, firefighting, EASL Technology II, digital photography, multimedia courses, and a number of different programs of study, including culinary arts as well. So also added an engineering and construction pathway. One of the big things that came up a little bit earlier that we have heard a little bit about, and we are focusing our entire year professional development on, is culturally responsive teaching. And last year, we had a couple of little incidents that came to our attention that would spawn a few focus groups that we had. And from the feedback that we got from these focus groups, we felt like there was a need to explore this a little bit further within our school. We sent a group of teachers, administrators to a workshop up in Portland, Chicago Catholic High School. And that kind of turned into a group of teachers and administrators and community members and students that are very motivated to kind of work with our teachers, work with us on how we can be responsive to every student that's over at the high school. So the goal this year is to focus all 10 of our professional development sessions on creating a safe and comfortable environment for every single student that's over at the high school. We've already had our first PD of the year that was led by a couple of our teachers actually that were part of that group. 16 folks, four students, one community member. I'm not going to be able to tell you the exact mix of, well, we have five administrators, five administrators, and there's leftover, two teachers. But very committed, we've enlisted the help of one of the consultants that led the group up in Portland to kind of guide our workforce this year as well. Her name is Elizabeth Benavie. And she runs a nonprofit up in Portland called Teaching While White. Her focus is more on kind of some racial, racially responsive teaching. We're extending the same protocols, the same process to our LGBTQ community, raise everything that we can to make sure that every one of our students is being served, as well as being possibly served in the Silverton High School. I'll give you another update on that when I report to you again mid-year. But I'm very excited about where we're at in terms of doing that group right now. We have our second professional development on Wednesday, and we're just kind of finishing up, finishing touches on that at this point right now. Last thing I'm talking about is kind of the biggest, the second biggest issue that we'll kind of deal with at this point. Last year, we were, a strong suggestion by the city to start moving our traffic all out, our student traffic all out of Cremiga. On the very first day of school, we gave the opportunity to see how that would play out before I finally step in the middle of the street and start driving traffic. And we've been doing that ever since. If we don't do that, the buses will get locked into our parking lot and we will not get enough or 45 minutes. The hard part about it is the traffic on Pine, as you come out of Cremiga, is just, just enough traffic to stop the traffic coming out of Cremiga. So you can go out and stop traffic coming both directions for 30 cars to come out of our parking lot, and really you've only got four or five cars backed up on Pine that needs to be decided and stop traffic and let it go again. We can do that, and it'll take 15 or 20 minutes to get everybody out, but one, it's dangerous. For me. Watching, you know, 200 teenagers drive out of our parking lot when anybody else is trying to stop. There's a little bit of a liability to it when it comes to, you know, any traffic that is stopping and what could happen there. We've been in touch with the county, and that's one of the other challenges there is both the roads that our parking lots bleed out onto are county roads. And so that makes it a little bit of a difficulty. I actually have one of the members of the county coming out tomorrow, our release time, to stand there with me. If your children are upset tomorrow when they get out of school, it's because I might have to let him see what that looks like when it backs up and may not be able to get out there and direct traffic tomorrow. We figured out that if we get out there right at 3:05, 3:09, start getting cars out there and doing that, that we clear things up pretty quickly. If we let him back up for five minutes, it backs up the entire parking lot. And that's likely what we're going to have to do, just to give them an idea of what that looks like and the problem we're trying to solve. So I don't have an answer to it yet. Until we find a better one, I'm going to be out there directing traffic. So that's going to become an issue at some point because I'm going to have a meeting or not be able to be out there. So those are our biggest challenges. Those are some of the great things that are happening to begin the school year as well. I'm excited about what we got going on right now. I'm excited about where this year is going to go. Questions?
Traffic questions.
Please.
Oh, I just want to say thank you for the hands on approach to the traffic because they know it's not easy. They're definitely used to that situation.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, I got some feedback. You know, I had some feedback from, no. Was that an event, we had an apollok yesterday, and one of the people that lives on Grant, they said life's completely different.
Right. There's no traffic.
She goes to work and she goes down Grant, Western, and she says it's completely different. So she's ecstatic.
Well, it's all not wrong.
My daughter, not so much, but we had a conversation. She survived. But I would, you know, you mentioned that there might be obviously a liability of someone out there directing traffic, but there's also a liability of not. Because if you have just enough cars to block, to block it and they're backing up, kids will be tempted to shoot the gaps. And that's a danger too. So I hope that the county can.
I hope so.
I hope they're listening.
I hope so. I think they are now that we finally decided like this is what we're going to do. And they said, okay, well, send somebody up to watch.
Yeah, maybe someone from the city and who can talk to them about what it was like on Grant and say, this is, this is the only solution for you guys. This is your road. I guess that was interesting listening, you know, I'm glad you listened to the city. And it's putting it kind of into the hands of the authority that's responsible for it. It's their road.
Well, they will be out tomorrow, and they will be out again at the end of the week. So we're hoping to put together a game plan for them with them to make it a less moving and safer way. But I will tell you the traffic is the people driving down, people have been very respectful, which I appreciate as well. I've heard one negative comment, one negative gesture, one.
I was going to say, so is there now no longer access to that, what we used to call the back circle, the pickup and drop off circle?
There is, Grant Street, yeah. So we have, we've essentially just eliminated one pickup and drop off. And that was when parents were coming in on Western and they were picking their students up in front of the gym. We've essentially eliminated that as a pickup and drop off. So the Grant Street circle is now, it gets a little backed up, especially in the morning. For whatever reason, more in the morning than beginning of the afternoon. And then we kind of designated that very front area when you drive into our parking lot, and then all of that is student parking now.
Okay.
And that was the conversation that we had last year at the point. If that is all non-student parking, students that get here early enough for the early bird classes, they can park in the overflow parking in the Graal, because the classes are right there.
Oh, okay.
And then students that beat Mr. Benavides out to the spot to turn them around can also park there. Mr. Benavides, about 7:15, 7:20, he generally shows up there, at which point we start directing all student traffic to Cremiga.
Okay.
But if you beat Mr. Benavides out there, you can park in the Graal parking lot as well.
I've seen multiple.
That's policy.
I've seen multiple employees out, because, you know, I have two kids there. But so the overflow parking, I was going to ask you about that. So that's where the early bird kids, like the zero period.
Yeah, they can park there, carrying their instruments in.
Totally. And that's right by the music. Because you can't drop the kids off right at the music door anymore, which was a really pain in the neck.
Sure.
We loved it. No, I totally get it though. But the overflow parking now, that's great.
And then, and once they're done.
We couldn't figure out what parking that was, so.
And once they're there, then, you know, once we get past, once Mr. Benavides gets out there, we start directing traffic in Cremiga, that lot will fill up.
It will.
And once that happens, then we open that middle gate and students are free to go and go to the overflow parking, but they're still coming into Cremiga.
Right. Okay, got it, okay.
So it's trying to train them to, that is your entrance, that's your spot.
And then you have the new drop off where the visitor parking was in front of the high school.
Correct.
Not the circle, but the new drop off. So parents can come in Cremiga, drop their kid off, and then go back out around and out of Cremiga?
Right. So actually, interestingly enough, that was all visitor parking right all there, and then it was all handicapped.
Handicapped, right, yeah.
Well, one of the major pieces of feedback we were getting regarding that handicap piece was that a lot of parents were using that as the pickup and drop off spots.
Oh, the handicap parking spots?
Yeah, and the majority of the handicap parking that we needed was generally for athletic contests, plays, those. So that entire front row now in front of the gym is all handicap parking.
Oh, okay.
And we kept three handicap spots there in the very end. We're actually going to move a couple of those to be closer to the front entrance to the school. And then there's separate, kind of one hour parking spots there. And then back, very far back, by the athletic complex on the teacher side, that's all long term visitor parking.
Oh, okay. Oh, wow. Okay, great.
Which, we'll figure out what to do with that, you know, in the future, because there is going to come a point where we're just going to let children sponsor them again.
So I haven't seen, and this is the very beginning of the year, but I haven't seen any kids parked down by the baseball field yet or the tennis courts.
I hope not.
Way down. So that's kind of a nice thing to see because that used to be hot. And so it's like, oh, this is beginning of the year.
We are still using attendance as a gauge for who's going to be able to maintain that parking pass. We feel like that's been a good motivator.
Yeah.
But yes, at this point right now, we're not really monitoring the parking lot at this point. We will in a couple of weeks.
Right, it happens different.
And the overflow park, the overflow parking takes care of all the extra kids because all the sophomores that are going to get their driver's license throughout this year.
Correct.
You've got, you know, we factor that impact of.
Yes, we do not anticipate that we are going to be able to sell more spots than we have. So hopefully we believe we're going to be able to accommodate the students we have.
Good. No one has to park on the street.
Yeah, good. Not at this point.
Yeah. And the great, like all the numbers, all the data of all the kids on track to graduate, you know, it indicates, you know, I mean, you're down to single digits, those kids have names, those kids have names, you know who they are.
And we know who they are.
Yep.
That's awesome.
So that's.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
It's nice being a school as large as we are and being able to identify a class specifically to, or so, or yeah.
I just want to make one more comment about your culturally responsive teaching. I anticipate and look forward to hearing more about how that will trickle down into the culture of the classrooms and how the students engage with one another and doesn't just fit in the ranks of teachers. Because that's what starts to shift what's okay, what's tolerated, what, you know.
It's my favorite work that we've engaged in.
Very exciting.
So it's my favorite work that we've engaged in. So.
Thank you for doing that.
Very good. It's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, summer school. Mr. Benavides.
Hi, my name is Juan Benavides. I'm, I work at the Silverton High School. I'm one of the two that helped run summer school along with Lisa Roth. Who run it the direction of Mrs. Han and Mrs. Farrell. So I went back and looked at the video of the presentation from last year that Mr. Kotz gave, Mrs. Griffin. Just kinda going through their notes. I kinda wrote some of my notes on what we changed on to how we can improve summer school. So starting off, we altered the way the checkout process was gonna be handled. So last year there was more flexibility when it came to the students, high school students in particular, being more free. So coming in and out. And that's kind of one of the perks of going to summer school was they even come in whenever you want, you need, when they're ready to rush those. Although, I mean, a lot of kids did like that. We felt that there needed to be more accountability on who was coming and who was going. And we just wanted to run like a normal, a normal school. The extension of what we normally do. So Mrs. Roth set up front. So if parents wanted to come check out a child, they had to come, go through the proper steps to make sure we were giving the right kid to the right parent. As well as that, we shortened passing times and increased class times. One of the feed, uh, the feedback from last year was passing times was a little too long. Kids kind of getting bored and just not too much to do. And so what we did is we decreased passing time down to four minutes. And we took away the two classes and made it classes. And now we're twenty-eight minutes long with twelve minute passing times. And this is for middle school classes. They had a, 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 actual more structure. Also, the incoming, the incoming freshmen are gonna be eighth graders. Right off the bat, we gave them all a school tour. And showed them all the cool things and know that what Silverton has to offer. And so that way they can feel more comfortable being there. They're gonna be there for weeks. And that way they know where the bathrooms are and they don't have to go and find somewhere to ask. So we did that. Also, based on the previous year's testing, students were divided into groups, which we can now divide them into specific classes to maximize their learning potential. Instead of, so that way the teachers can tailor their curriculum to help the students better. Also, one of the feedback was they didn't like coming to the high school to sign up. Kinda going out of their way to sign up for summer school if they're, you know, they're one of everything. So we had the counselors at the outlining schools and also in the end time schools do the summer school signups. And I think that was a little more intimate for counselors to know the kids on an individual basis and what they needed and the electives they wanted to do and what they actually needed to complete. So, and students, so not incoming freshmen, but sophomores or seniors, a total of thirty-two and a half credits were given. That's approximately sixty-two classes that they made up over the summer. So they were there, they, they, they worked hard, they did what they needed to do and they got the credits recovered. So that was, that was pretty awesome. I liked that. So the, going to the high school, I mean, going to the middle school, the daily format was eight A M. Breakfast was beans, I mean, no, seven thirty breakfast was beans served. Breakfast and lunch were free. So they didn't have to worry about bringing money or adding money to their account. They just came and ate. Eight o'clock, class started. Now, school, summer school ran Monday through Thursday, eight to noon. Now, if they wanted to ride a bus, they, uh, lunch ran from twelve to twelve thirty. Buses came at twelve thirty. And it was a great coordinated effort from the bus bar and the food services. Everybody kinda making sure we rallied on these kids and getting what they need. So like I said, we, last year it was five periods that were shorter. This year we, we trimmed it down to three. So we have two core classes and what the, what the kids needed. And based on their star scores, we divided them into groups. So every kid brought a language and English class and also a math class as well as elective. Now, the electives were S E L, digital media and P E. And we added P E because one of the feedbacks from the students last year were, well, you know, we're here, we kinda need something to do, like exercise or something like that. So we added Lexi Paula and Eric Cross and we added a, a P E class if you choose an elective. Now, not surprisingly, as summer school, the first two days, P E got overwhelmed with kids. They wanna go, they wanna have fun. So it was good. They got out, they were able to get out and do some exercise because the classes were longer, hour twenty-eight minutes longer, for them kind of, you know, buckling down and doing what they needed to do. So out of the incoming ninth graders, we initially had forty-five students sign up. Now, those forty-five, twenty-eight came. Now, those twenty-eight, twenty-eight received a half of the elective credit to start high school. Now, these twenty-eight that came, they were selected or recommended come from their counselors. So these are students that might be a little at risk or, or, or lower. So they, they needed to come. So for them to start high school on a positive note, you know, it's a change. It's, it, I think it's a change for the better. So that's good. So the others that didn't come, I know forty-five initially signed up. We called home, we did multiple calls, we tried everything we could to find out why they were coming. And the reasons varied from the parents not believing they needed it, they finished middle school on a good note, they wanted to kind of give them to, the, the parents thought it was a mistake that they signed up, that they didn't really needed it, or there was a miscommunication to the counselor, the parent, the application that they're actually supposed to go through. So only a few never called me back. But only a few did call me back and those are the few that I wish they would've called me back, by the way. So at the end of summer school, the, the incoming freshmen took a survey. First question was, did you enjoy summer school? Ninety-six point eight, I'm, I'm pretty much ninety-six, yeah, said yes. They enjoyed it. They liked being here. They, they liked what it was all about. And only one student did not like it. I did talk to that one student and asked why he didn't like it. And that's because she thought it was gonna be something different. But, you know, it's fine. That's okay. And so we asked why you like coming to summer school. They enjoyed learning specific skills. They liked meeting new people. And they liked preparing for high school. They like learning the school, the skills that they're gonna need for high school. They like hanging out with the teachers, practicing skills. And they like just seeing other students around. One of the big things is summer school, you take all these kids from different outlining schools and also, you know, so they get a chance to meet people before they go in. Make you feel more confident and kind of get ready to tap high school. Last question is, what, what didn't you like about high school, about summer school? They wish that we would add our C T E electives. I know, like welding, a couple of students wanted theater, auto body welding, which, I mean, that would be awesome to get. A couple of students wanted it to get pushed back an hour. And the biggest one was they would like more snacks during the day. Cause I know we had this hospitality table when you walked in and they had a bunch of snacks and coffee and water and Gators. That way anytime during the day they can go. I think we call it the Fox Refuel Station. They can go and get their, you know, muffins or whatever they wanted. Just welcoming environment. So they wanted more snacks. And the teachers also took the survey to see how they felt about it. They, they thought it was a positive atmosphere for the students. They felt the screening process that Mrs. Han provided were working very well. The students were eager and receptive. They wanted to learn. They wanted to be there, which was a nice change pace. The timing in summer school, so last year, the summer school started July nineteenth? Yeah, I think it was, it was July twenty-seventh. So when we pushed it back, the starting, they had a week off and then summer school started. So a lot of teachers liked the timing, kind of gave them a break and then back to work. Life was good. It was easy to be part of. Summer school's welcoming. The staff liked the longer parents. One of the quotes from the teacher was, B Y U and credit recovery is great. Let's hope we can eliminate what they've already done and select, and have sections for the modified kids. This teacher worked in Fishbowl with Wes and it was perfect. Paul, Mr. Paul and Mr. Wolf ran the middle school math program along with Jen Boswell, who was one of our assistants at the school. And they liked how they had rotation. So it wasn't just go to your classes and, and just be there for an hour, twenty-eight minutes. Their classes were actually connected on the computer lab. So every twenty or thirty minutes, they would actually rotate. And kind of get three sections done in one class period. So that way they, it will keep the kids entertained and also keep their attention for a little longer. That worked very well. Curriculum was laid out in a great way. And this teacher said that the teachers did a great job adapting curriculum to meet the needs of the students from them. So that's one of the great things about the teachers we had in summer school. They went above and beyond staying after or working on their own time to create that curriculum that the students needed. A couple of areas that we can improve on for middle school, summer school is the teachers will like to ask, uh, access star testing results to be sure that the topics they needed to cover were covered. So coming in, they have the star testing to see where the students were initially at. And then they would like another testing to be done at the end to see if they, if they'll actually. They like, the, the teachers would like more direction to know what to include on the summer school lessons. Which, yeah. Letting the teacher know the star testing will be administered in the beginning so they can prepare. They would like to know, get students ready to take this test or, you know, like I said, get the results at the end. And they wanted to add more elective options. Now, the high school format was a lot the same. Breakfast and lunch was offered free, Monday through Thursday. Everything was a lot the same. The only difference is there's more programs. So for high schoolers, we offered credit recovery, S A T prep, talented and gifted health, alternative education, P E and fitness. So these are students that didn't wanna do or for some of you couldn't do P E or fitness, they're in regular school. So we had those programs running in the school all at the same time. And as well as incoming eighth graders or incoming ninth graders and having the normal credit recovery and tag. We also had migrant ed there stationed at the school in Bore B Wing. And we had, I think that's, I think that's it. So yeah, we had migrant ed going in the school. So any given time, we had about a hundred kids kinda doing their thing in school, which is great, you know? They give them a place that they can go and, and feel welcome and have food and people that care about them. So the students that were in the credit recovery classrooms, two of these stu, um, classes were in computer labs, E L A. So in Fishbowl, we had English, language arts, social studies, health, world history, and, and the up searching computer lab. We had physical science, how Mrs. Terrified, which she did a great, wonderful job. S A T prep was conducted by Mrs. Morgan and it was in her classroom. So the kids, the students were able to sign up through their counselor on, on S A T. I think they had four sessions during four weeks. And they were given, you know, curriculums that they were given to get their SAT. Math credit recovery, that was one of the most popular ones that the kids needed to make up. And that was taught by Mr. Mack in Mr. Zeiss's classroom. And that was wonderful. So here are some numbers. So out of the seventy students that initially signed up through the counselors, fifty-four attended. Now, of those fifty-four students, twenty-four are now, as a result, in that back on track graduate. Forty-five and a half, total high school credits, or half credits were awarded, but some still in progress. Thirty-one and a half of those getting awarded for tenth to, tenth to twelfth graders. We had multiple teachers. So we didn't just have the homeroom teachers there, they're teaching it. We actually had multiple teachers there that could also be in the classroom to assist the, the students that were more in need. So like, we ranked it, Mr. Terrell, Cheryl Poole, and did some job sharing. So those are the teachers that can actually do some one-on-one time to the kids that need it the most. So out of the, the fifty-four, the twenty-four that received credit out of the fifty-four, the others, reasons varied. Some of them, they weren't deficit in the credits to, to begin with. They just wanted to come to accelerate their, or to take a class in the summer. So they didn't have to take it on the, in the class load during the academic school year so they could take more ahead of your load. Let's see, the, so they also took, so the tag students took health, financial literacy and P E. So the teachers, unfortunately, the high school students, since they, the high school students, so for example, if a, a student came in, he needed one section of math. And he came in the first day and he did have one section of math, he's done. Done for the summer school. Big, you know, big high fives. It's fun. So since that didn't happen, next year I wanna implement a kind of an exit survey. So when a student gets done, we have a little chrome book there and we kinda do a survey on the way. We collect the data at the end and see if it's, how summer school's working for them. We didn't do that this year. Other, the, the teachers did take a survey and this is kind of some of the results. So the teachers thought it was a welcoming atmosphere. The students were buying in. They spent, they were, they were able to spend meaningful time with the students. Physical science and biology, the curriculum ran smoothly. Once the students passed the standard they needed, they were done. Which is great. It gives a kid incentive to work hard and to come and to buckle down and do what they needed done. And like I told, I told Lisa Roth, some of these students aren't, aren't built for a brick and mortar school or the nine, the, or the eight to three schedule. So the flexibility of coming in and sitting down and listening to the music and just plugging away is great for them. And they actually showed great, great progress. The students, I thought, they didn't get a lot of work done in the school year, but came to summer school, they just plugged away and rocked it. We had multiple teachers that could assist in any way we needed them. Teachers and students, like I said, both really liked summer school starting earlier. Some suggestions for improvements that I can see and also the teachers recommended for next year are clear expectations for high school attendance. Although we did have an accountability when it came to checking, checking in and checking out. So the incoming ninth graders, they had to attend sixteen, was sixteen out of nineteen? It was sixteen out of the nineteen days for them to receive the half credit of elective. So they have them instead of being there all, you know, every day. High schoolers do not. So they don't come for a week and then they come for one day and get a bunch of fun. And then they don't come for a week, which is, they work at their own pace, but I would like some accountability for them to actually show up every day. And get them kind of programmed and ready to go for the academic school year. Cause in, you know, in the academic school year, you gotta show up, you gotta do what you were. More administrative access to the B Y U credit recovery systems. As, as of right now, Mrs. Walker, Laura Walker was the only person that would be able to access the B Y U to see where the students were at or to change courses or anything like that. She was the only person, so she wasn't there, we were kind of, kind of lost. So I know I would like to get myself or a couple of teachers trained on to navigate the B Y U and Play-Doh classes, maybe add kids, drop kids, or look on what they need to do to, or where they're at, just to have administrative access to it. Giving the students, the high school students, when they come, list of credits they need to complete, similar to the class schedule. So, you know, Mrs. Han comes in as a tenth grader, she was, she was given the schedule, what the schedule of the classes needs to complete. And kind of the credit she needs and the section she needs to complete. So that way the, the students have a hard visual, they can take out, say, all right, health is done, let's cross it out, now we're on the map. Adding, oh, here, here's a recommendation, a recommendation from those teachers. Adding students to summer school roster that need essential skills, work samples. So if they did not complete the work samples during the academic school year, they're able to come in and meet with the teacher and get the work samples done. So that way next year, they can focus on that year's work samples. Pushing summer school back an hour. Again, they want, I guess they just wanna sleep in. And, and having a barbecue for the students on the last day of the working. I know we kinda tossed around the idea, but unfortunately, we kinda ran out of time.
It's pretty successful.
And I can't barbecue very well, so I gotta talk to them. So once, once, once we get all that dialed in, I think we'll be good. So that is. Do I, any, any questions?
I have a question.
I do too.
Shocking, right? The, the B Y U, was that just for the personal finance and health or was B Y U used for some of the other classes as well? I'm just curious.
Yeah. So B Y U was actually utilized for some of the credit recoveries as well as some of the original credits that were given.
Okay. Okay. And that, that system worked well?
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of just, you said you'd be nice to be able to have a little bit of flexibility about how you can access it. But in general, it worked well for the students?
Yeah, yeah. Laura, yeah, Laura Walker ran it perfectly. She actually met with the high schoolers that were coming in that had some difficulty. She actually sat down with them, walked them through what they needed and what it looked like. And it, it worked very well.
Good.
Um, so a student, if, when they sign up for summer school, correct me if I'm wrong, and I might have misheard you, but they can come in and just fulfill, if they just need to fulfill one standard?
Yes.
Then they're done?
That's good.
They just be done?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to think of my kids' standards and what they're learning at high school. And I, I think that's.
Did I say that correctly?
Yeah. So as, as far as the standards, the, the way the B Y U curriculum works is we have two different options. One is a credit recovery. And so the students do a pre-test and anything that they can demonstrate on that standard, then they don't have to redo.
They can just like test it out.
It's a little different when it's not B Y U. So math, for example, is very, they use the term targets, right? Instead of we're tracking what targets they need. Not everybody who failed math was eligible for a credit recovery. Some of them were so far behind that it wasn't appropriate to just do a targeted intervention. They needed to retake algebra. they needed to retake algebra or geometry. And so that's part of why that number of, of kind of the kids that we had versus the kids that show up is that as a math department, they went through, I'm pointing at one of our math teachers and they made very specific recommendations. Yes, this student would benefit from summer school. No, this student needs to retake geometry.
Okay, so that makes sense with the numbers.
Yeah.
The kids come and go, like, the numbers come in, but then it was, and I was like, wait, how did you get? The numbers were adding up in my head when he was saying that.
And so definitely a whole team effort in identifying which kids would be most successful in summer school and then to move on, right? We don't want to set them up for continued failure and so we rely on the experts that are in the classroom to help us make those decisions.
Right, okay, okay.
You could probably have more snacks to give.
More snacks?
If you put on that snack, it'd have like...
They're relaxed.
Yeah, we bought this, a whole bunch of snacks, you know, so just like, and these new schoolers, their appetite never ends.
It's true.
So it's not more snacks.
I'm probably not allowed to do this, but I think Mr. Benavides and Mrs. Roth, they just deserve a tremendous round of applause. I think, we talked a lot in the planning phase about really just making it an environment where if students came after a week and we hadn't seen them, that all we said was, we're so happy to see you and get them to work and they were the embodiment of, or embodiment of that. And making kids feel welcome who don't always find high schools their place. And so I just think Mr. Benavides and Mrs. Roth deserve lots of applause.
Any more questions?
I just want to make a comment. It is, summer school is so critical for kids in multiple different ways. Not just the academics, but those kids are going to bond with you and they're going to bond with those teachers and other adults and students like they would have never bonded before. And so that will keep those kids coming back to that building, whatever building it is. And so the human contact with that and the one-on-one factor is a big deal. So I really want to keep that funded or, you know, as much as possible. My daughter took a summer course through BYU at home, she could just do it online, but it was great. She just had the one course, she felt great, she wasn't stressed, so it's a good thing. So I just, I really want to make that, you know...
I'll keep it going.
If I'm still on the board, we're going to keep it going. We're going to make it available to many people, so...
Yeah, as you say, high school success is the funding source, right?
Absolutely, yeah. So we're going to keep that money coming, hopefully. As long as I'm here, I'm going to try.
Appreciate your stuff.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, you were up there.
Sure, I'd like to thank the board, the staff and everyone for welcoming me to Silverton and the Silver Falls School District. It's been a terrific few weeks and I'm looking forward to the rest of the year. I want to thank Maddie Traver, did I say your name right? Maddie Traver and our student crew for the work to record and broadcast our meetings. I'd also like to acknowledge and remind us that having students working with us requires to be sensitive to the fact that they have school in the morning and there's rules about students working past 10:00 PM. I'm confident, we all believe it's vitally important for students to get enough sleep so they can function properly during the day. So please join me in thanking them and also in committing to do our best to have these meetings adjourned by 10:00 PM. Oregon is about to experience the largest personal kicker in Oregon history. Projected general fund and lottery resources have grown to $324 million for the 1920 biennium since July 1. The state's reserve accounts, the education stability fund, the rainy day fund and cash reserves are currently projected to reach $2.58 billion during the 2019-21 biennium. This is equivalent to 12.2% of the general fund budget. And with the addition of the new state revenue stream from the Student Success Act, it is safe to say that Oregon is in a good position to weather even a significant economic downturn. I would like to encourage everyone, next time they run into Laura Stanley, to thank him and his crew for their outstanding work on the seismic projects over the summer. While there's still a few things to wrap up, a significant scope of work was completed to make sure our building's stronger and safer for our kids, staff and all the parents and volunteers who pitch in daily to make our schools a great place for kids. A lot of work was done, including about $1.6 million in seismic upgrades at Mark Twain Elementary and about $1.5 million in seismic upgrades at the middle school, which is getting close to wrapping up. I'd like to thank the board for their commitment to continuous improvement, how the board functions and how the board works to set policy and guide the district. The board had a training from OSBA on August 19th and received a refresher about the basics of serving as a member of a school board, including topics such as staying in our lane and how to work together as a board to accomplish the will of the communities we represent in service to our diverse student body. Today I forwarded to board members on behalf of our board developments expert at OSBA a 71-question self-assessment and evaluation with the instruction to complete the survey before September 23rd, so the results can be used to inform the next training session scheduled for September 30th. The results of the survey will show how the Silver Falls School Board is performing in aggregate for each of the five roles of a school board. So thank you very much for your work on that.
Thank you. I think I'll just take a minute to say thank you for jumping in with both feet, you know, you've been busy for the first month or so here and we appreciate it. Okay, we are now on to board reports. Anybody have anything that they want to share?
I did, oh, sorry. Really quickly, I did move forward on doing some research about the committee appointments that we talked about last time. I am currently in active communication with OSBA on the topic, but haven't, it gets really muddy really quickly, so I hope to have some clarity for all of you on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you.
And tomorrow, I believe Paul and I will be visiting schools. Yay, I'm really excited, I get to go on field trips. I'm off to the schools.
What schools are you visiting?
Let's see, we're going to start off with Scottsdale, Blackbeak, I'm sorry, Blackbeak. Excuse me, New Creek, Mark Twain and Bethany. Tomorrow we'll pull off it, yeah, great. And we'll be up again following Tuesday until we get done. Enjoy? Yeah.
Great, looking forward to taking everybody on tours. In fact, there may be a signup sheet coming around pretty soon, so watch for that.
That sounds great. Send it on.
Yeah, Jonathan, I, took weeks, 10 days ago, I attended that committee conversation that Mayor Palmer had. And I was then pondered how to distill, you know, what I heard there, but I don't have to because I'm glad they came and just shared their stories here. So I was glad to see them do that. And it was good. I'm glad I went, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thanks for going.
You're good. Next up, SFBA's got a slot now, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, thank you for giving us a spot on the agenda. So our goal in doing this is just to continue to have open communication with the board and just kind of give you guys short updates of what we've been up to and kind of what, yeah, what we're doing. So at this point, last year, we came and introduced ourselves as the executive board, so we wanted to kind of do that again. Our two Millers are not able to be with us tonight, Angie and Nancy, our treasurer and secretary, but you guys all know me.
Frank Ketter, so vice president, co-vice president.
Sarah Barth, vice president too.
Yeah, so, yeah, so at this point, again, last year, we came to the board and shared some of our goals for the year. And we met earlier in the summer just to revisit those goals and just kind of assess, do we want to stick with those, do we want to tweak them, what do we want to do with that? And so we decided that we wanted to maintain our goals from last year and just kind of dig in a little bit deeper on those. So I just wanted to share those again with you guys. So our first goal is building relationships and we set that goal basically with every level of stakeholders in what we're doing. So not only with our members, but also with school board members, with administration and with just members of the community as well. And then transparency in what we're doing, just, you know, open communication, honesty and, you know, all of that goes towards the building relationships piece. And then advancing the wellbeing of our members. And so what I wanted to talk with you guys about tonight is just to share some of the things that we have started and both within just our organization, but also with administration and, yeah. So Paul and Dan invited us to form a labor management committee, which we were very excited to get the invitation for that. And Tom is also on that committee and so we've now met twice. And so that committee is going to consist of Dan as an administrative voice and Tom as a board voice and then our executive committee for SFBA. And then we also had the discussion to include a building administrator, so that we have a voice from the principal level. And so Jamie McCarty joined us in our last meeting and so we feel really optimistic about that committee. We feel like it's going to be a great place for a lot of just creative problem solving and discussion about things. And so we're excited to have all of those levels of, and with that committee represented. Another thing that we wanted to talk about is the roles and responsibility training that is a joint training between our association and administration and that was part of the settlement agreement and arbitration. And so we have a date set for that, September 25th. That would be administration and all of our building reps coming together to hear this message from Brian Hungerford as one presenter and then Adam Arms, who's the general counsel of OEA, as the other presenter. And so Dan and I worked together to put that together and we're going to be meeting soon with both Brian and Adam just to talk about the agenda for that and kind of the topics that need the most coverage. So again, that's another way that we're just trying to build those relationships and just kind of make sure that everybody's on the same page in as far as, you know, what the expectations are and legally what, you know, what is appropriate and, yeah, moving forward and that together. We are also starting our monthly forum meetings. Traditionally, we've had quarterly forum meetings and after talking in our labor management committee, we've kind of decided to tweak what forum looks like a little bit. So we're increasing the frequency and also, we also decided to add building principals to that forum committee as well. So we'll have one representative from each of our schools from SFBA. And then Kevin Palmer and Leslie Roach will be the principal voices on that committee and then Dan as well. And so that committee is going to be meeting monthly as well. That will start at the end of October because our first meeting for that will really be the joint training that we do at the end of September. And then as topics come up on that, we might bring in other people as needed. So if there's, you know, a question of facilities or if there's a question of curriculum or something like that, then other voices would be invited into that meeting as well. So at the SFBA level internally, we had our first building representative meeting last week. And there we talked about the importance of having monthly check-ins with our building administrators, just to kind of check the pulse of the building and just problem solve anything that might be coming up from either side, you know, so that we can do that problem solving at the building level and try to keep things running smoothly as much as possible and to keep everything at the lowest level as much as possible. So that's something that is really being encouraged, that we are really encouraging our reps to do and that they are all willing to do. And so I think that's also been talked about at the administrative level too, is having those monthly check-ins as well, so I hope we're on the same page in that regard. And then finally, we're still in contract negotiations and so we have our next bargaining date scheduled for September 24th. And so we're looking forward to getting back to that and hopefully making some progress. Yeah, so that's our report. Do you guys have any questions?
I'm sure I have questions, but I really appreciate the update. And I like the idea of communication with the, you know, site-based principals and, you know, with the kind of self-problems and whatever.
I'd have to say, thank you for coming.
Okay, we have our second public comment, if anybody's interested. Okay. Move on to our action items for tonight. And the action item A is the adoption of the strategic plan, which we discussed earlier today. Based on that discussion, I would accept a motion to approve said strategic plan.
I move that we adopted 2019-2024 strategic plan.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the 2019 strategic plan signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes, you know? And we do not have, it sounds like, anything regarding OSBA elections, so we can skip that one. And with that said, we are ready to adjourn. It's about 9:30.